Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's good to see you all here tonight. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Agenda for this Monday, March 6, 2023. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson has been excused. Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Bokey?
Here.
Councilmember Branstetter?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss?
Here.
And Mayor Whalen?
Present.
You have a quorum?
Thank you very much. Now, if you'd please join me in a brief moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving this great nation, both here and abroad, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Million miles per minute. Well, what a great night we've got in store, and it starts off with a very sweet tribute, shall we say, to our evening's business showcase, Bite Me Cookies. And I think we've got Deborah Tuttle, the owner, with us tonight, along with a video presentation, I believe, Madam Clerk. So I will have Ms. Tuttle join me at the dais up there. I'll present you with the proclamation for your business showcase, and I think we're going to be treated to a video. Come on up. Welcome. How are you?
Thank you.
Nice to see you. Well, I appreciate you coming tonight for us to present you with this City of Lakewood Business Showcase in honor of Bite Me Inc., a local business here in our midst. And I think this is quite appropriate because despite our efforts to educate the city manager on the importance and need for bringing council members' local treats from local owners and providers, it has been a challenge. And so we are so appreciative of you coming tonight and reminding the city manager that we have a local business that can provide treats for members of the council as we go laboriously through the city manager updates every Monday night. It is indeed an honor to be reminded that we have a local business that can provide the treats like this, Mr. Coffield. The City of Lakewood is honored to present this business showcase to Bite Me Inc. as its March 2022 Business Showcase for its reputation as a respected manufacturer in Lakewood. And in celebration of its continued expansion, Bite Me Inc. is known for its exemplary work ethic and demonstrated exceptional treatment of its employees. And its owner, Deborah, uses proactive and innovative workforce attraction and retention methods to make it the success that it is. And we're just so proud to have you here tonight and are honored by your presence. And so we'll take a quick little picture, and then the floor is yours. And thank you again.
My floor is mine.
You can say a few words if you wish. You can remind the manager about the flavors that are available every Monday night.
Well, thank you. I will say something really quick. This happened to me about a month ago, and it truly is, it just, it just makes my heart beat. I went to work at about 10 o'clock in the morning, and as I walked in, my staff was in the main office, all huddled around a computer on a Zoom call. And I walked in, and I kind of waved and said hello, and they continued business. And then I decided to stay and sit back, and I did. And I felt like a fly on the wall. They were conducting business. They were closing deals, making deals. And I'm talking about with national teams. I mean, this is, they are doing big things there. And I almost felt out of place. And then I said to myself, you know what? This is what I've dreamt of. This is what I've dreamt of. They don't even need me here. And so it's, I haven't done anything special. I'm not special. But the people who work at that facility kick butt every single day. So it's, I haven't done anything great. And I will tell you, back to the City of Lakewood, 90% of my staff live right here. And they are really doing a great job, and I'm thankful. Yeah. So thank you for having us.
It's an honor.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you.
And it is. I just, I just want to also point out, Deborah, that members of our own chamber staff are here, Linda and Sue, who well know the importance of a thriving small business community here in Lakewood. So I'm thankful that you're here, too, to see this tonight. And we all really appreciate you and your staff. Thank you again. Well, great. Well, let's enjoy.
Thank you.
Yep. And Deborah, after the video, we're going to bring you down, and we'll take a photograph with the council members, so you can have it for your, your business after the video. Yep.
Hi, I'm Deb Tuggle. This is Bite Me Inc. We're a cookie manufacturer in Lakewood, Washington. We've been in Lakewood about eight years now. We are a cookie manufacturer that manufactures cookies for grocery stores all over the country. Matter of fact, most of our business is outside of the state of Washington. We have a total of about 30 staff, seven people working in admin, and the rest of our staff are in the bakery working. Our staff arrives at about 5:00 a.m. The night before, we pre-measure most of the dry ingredients, and we'll precut the butter. So when they come in the door, they are able to just immediately start mixing and baking. Our company bakes about 14,000 cookies an hour. Once the product is baked and it's cooled, if it doesn't need to be frosted, it will be packaged that day, palletized that day, and usually within 24 to 48 hours, pallet will be picked up by trucks. So everything is palletized, trucks pick up, and distribute all over the country. It's important to Bite Me, the staff, and myself, that we, that we work directly with the community. We specifically hire women and immigrants, people who English is not their first language. We have had English classes, computer classes outside of the business here through working with Clover Park. And we pay for our staff to, to go to those classes, and we pay for their hours that are there in class. So it, it's not a hardship for them to go to school. So they look at that opportunity as a learning opportunity versus a hardship. So we, we make sure we pay them to go, and we make sure that we pay for the classes. So we're continuously trying to get them to grow and learn. So when they leave here, that they have an opportunity to, they've grown here. So when they leave here and work somewhere else, they're taking skills with them. And that just empowers the community, and it empowers them as people, or anyone as people that would work here.
And so those are all the questions I have for you. Is there anything else that you would like to say or anything?
No, only that the City of Lakewood rocks, number one. City of Lakewood rocks. They help small business. They help protect small business, and they kept me going when COVID really could have destroyed many small businesses in this community. City of Lakewood came to me and said, what can we do? And boy, did they step up, and I'm thankful.
That makes me even more proud, Deb. That's awesome. Come on down. That's great. Yeah. And council members, please bring your cookies so we can wave them as part of the photograph. That'll be fun. Well, again, what a great night. So continuing with our proclamation and presentation section of tonight's agenda, we are honored to present a proclamation recognizing March as Women's History Month. And for this, I'd like to call in Linda Smith, our Lakewood Chamber Commerce President and CEO, to meet with Councilmember Patty Bell at the podium.
Please join me. And your photographer. Your paparazzi is with you. Well, thank you, Linda, for joining us today here for the Women's History Month proclamation. So I'll go ahead and read this. Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation, and were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas women have served our country courageously in the military, and whereas women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of history. Now therefore, the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaim March 2023 as Women's History Month in the City of Lakewood, and calls upon all residents to acknowledge and honor the contributions and proclamations of all women. Proclaim this sixth day of March 2023. Signed, Mayor Jason Whalen.
Very nice. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. The mic is yours.
Thank you. Wow, Councilmember Bell, that was quite a mouthful. Thank you so much. Mayor, council members, on behalf of the Lakewood Chamber, I'm proud to receive this proclamation. You know, for the girls and young women of today, knowing women's achievements expands their sense of what's possible. And for all of us, this knowledge of women's strengths and contributions builds respect and nourishes self-esteem. It's humbling to stand on the shoulders of all of the women who came before us, amazing, courageous, beautiful, talented women who laid the framework for us to succeed and be recognized in society and to be able to be here tonight. So I want to thank you, Mayor, and council members, for presenting this to the Lakewood Chamber, and we are honored to receive it on behalf of all the women in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, I'd like to present a proclamation recognizing March as American Red Cross Month. And for this, I think we have Larry Smith and Yvette Wilson, the American Red Cross in the audience, to meet me at the podium.
How are you, sir?
Good.
Good to see you. Is Yvette coming? Is she in the audience? Okay.
She was going to do the speaking, but unheard.
Well, that's okay. It's all good. We can send up a Red Cross message. But we are pleased tonight to recognize the American Red Cross for doing so much in our community. And certainly being the Gateway City's Joint Base Lewis McCord, the Red Cross is even more important to those service members and their families who often have need for the Red Cross. I myself served on the Red Cross Board early on from 1993 for six years, I think, as my first foray into board service. And I very much really appreciated the opportunity. So pleased to present this proclamation on behalf of the City of Lakewood. Whereas in 1881, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating human suffering. And whereas more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers here in Lakewood, who continue to carry out Clara's humanitarian legacy. And whereas residents of Lakewood have joined millions of people across the United States who volunteer, give blood, donate financially, or learn vital life-preserving skills through the Red Cross. And whereas the contributions of local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours, whether it's in providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families devastated by local disasters, donating essential blood, supporting service members and veterans, along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of military life, helping to save the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid. And whereas this humanitarian spirit is part of the foundation of Lakewood, and the work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. And whereas we dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of the American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who lived by her words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it." Now therefore, the Lakewood City Council hereby designates March 2023 as American Red Cross Month here in the City of Lakewood, and we urge all persons to support its humanitarian mission. Proclaim the sixth day of March 2023, Jason Whalen, Mayor. So Larry, on behalf of all of us, to the American Red Cross, we thank you for the incredible dedication of all the volunteers who serve and advance the mission of the American Red Cross. We know it's a huge endeavor. And again, personally, as one former military member overseas who received a Red Cross message, and certainly the comfort that went along with dealing with a family member, I really appreciated it at the time, and continue to appreciate all the fine work you do today. So thank you. Yep.
Mayor, council members, thank you very much. I am a Lakewood resident. I've lived here for over 60 years, and I'm a retired service member. So I too know the value of the Red Cross to service to armed forces. My voice is a little gone, but thank you very much for this. And we are always looking for more volunteers, because we respond every night of the year to fires all over the country. So if you can assist us in getting volunteers, we really would appreciate it. Thank you.
And I'm sure our Fire Chief Jim Sharp would testify to the good work that Red Cross does, in addition to helping all the work you guys do. Absolutely. Great. Next, we will have our youth council members, Brandon Elliott and Hank Jones, provide us with the Youth Council Report for the month. Gentlemen.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, and the council, and Happy Women's History Month. I'm Hank, and I'm here with my co-chair tonight, Brandon, as we share a report. At tonight's Youth Council meeting, we met again with the City Communications Manager, Brandon Grimley, and furthered our discussions around how the city's social media presence can be enhanced to resonate with young people in the community. Brandon answered all of our questions about their role in the city government and how our organization can collaborate with theirs to have further reach and promote the council's activities. We talked all about finding new and creative ways to get more in touch with the new generation that ended with myself and another member of the council filming an Instagram reel after the meeting that will be posted on the city's Instagram page tomorrow. Sure you can imagine, I was very excited about that. And that provides an excellent segue into my next topic, because that reel was to promote the upcoming roundtable this Thursday on climate change for Lakewood High School students that will be held at Harrison Prep. You know, this event is our second time holding one of these events, and we really have the process nailed down. We're blasting it out on all of our channels, promoting it as best as we can, and we're hoping for a good crowd, because this topic is obviously of paramount importance. And the youth are the only ones who will be able to solve the problems at hand. Here's Brandon.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Hank. Youth Council has continued to prepare for the upcoming Youth Summit on June 10. We made the decision to expand the summit to seventh and eighth graders to be more inclusive of all age groups and continue to cultivate potential new members for our council. We're always looking to expand. We also have recently acquired our keynote speaker, which we are very excited about. It's incredibly satisfying to see this event coming together, and we're excited to keep updating you over the next few months. Lastly, I just want to say thank you for helping me gain a presidential scholarship to the University of Washington, Seattle. With your recommendation and continued support throughout the years, I finally achieved a major goal in my life. I've always seen higher education as a pathway for success and a way to elevate my community and family. With this $10,000 a year scholarship, I get to alleviate the financial burden of school while developing as a leader. I'll continue to represent Lakewood well, and I can't wait for the new opportunities ahead. Thank you again.
Brandon, Brandon, Brandon. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Absolutely good. I couldn't tell that you were going to U Dub by the hat. It's great to see you both. Any questions, members of the council? Deputy Mayor?
You mentioned, thank you. Thank you, guys, and congratulations again, Brandon. You mentioned the roundtable at Harrison Prep. You said tomorrow?
On Thursday.
Thursday, March 9.
What time?
2:30, if I'm correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it'll be right after school on Thursday, just to, or more, more close to around 2:30, just so we have time for people from other high schools to get to HP. So it'll start as soon as our after-school program starts on the normal schedule, and then it'll go until about 4:30, roughly.
Okay. Thank you. I'm not sure I can make it, but I'll do my best.
Yeah, we'd love to have you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Well, thank you, gentlemen. How's the Youth Council or Youth Summit shaping up? Is that coming together pretty well for May?
It's coming together pretty well. Our major goal with this year's Youth Summit is to cultivate leadership in the community and kind of, we're going to focus on mental health as always, but we're really kind of pivoting towards developing leaders and teaching the youth of Lakewood about like leadership and how to advocate.
And then one, one final question for me. I see Ms. Dodsworth in the audience. So do we get any sort of applicants for the Climate Conference in Wisconsin through Rotary?
We have expressed interest from the younger members. I don't know if anyone has followed through, but I'll be sure to bring it up at the next meeting again.
Okay. I know there's a little bit of a timeline on that, so you got it undercover. Okay, great. Well, good to see you.
So if I can add to that?
Please.
I'm not sure what Shannon has done with it, but we did have her circulate at our last meeting, a signup sheet or an interest sheet for younger members.
Great.
And so there's definitely some interest in that.
Very good.
Yeah.
We appreciate it. All right. Thanks. Thanks for coming. Next, we have our Clover Park School District Board Report from Board Member Carol Jacobs. And I don't know if she's appearing virtually, or I assume so.
I do not see her in the virtual waiting room at this time.
Very good. Well, if Board Member Jacobs appears, we'll certainly let her have her opportunity to give us an update. But until then, we're going to move on to the public comment section of tonight's agenda. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or live, virtual, or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Ms. Schumacher, at BSchumacher@cityofLakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the council electronically. The clerk will now read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance, so we have a record.
Mayor, we received comments in advance from Casey Crook.
Thank you very much. And I believe that was on the library information posted to the city website, if you haven't had a chance to review. Members of the audience may comment on items related to any matter pertaining to city business under this public comment period. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes per person, and certainly ask that you identify yourself and your residence for the record, such as Paul Bokey, Lakewood, Washington. Virtual comments are certainly allowed. If you'd like to provide live, virtual, a public comment, please join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by dialing in the telephone number listed on the screen and entering the meeting ID number as indicated. Please use the star nine raise hand feature to be called upon. What I try to do is switch between Zoom participants and in-person participants every other Monday night so that we have a fair chance to get those to sign in, to speak, who have signed in either personally or virtually. Those who have signed in to speak in person will be called on first, followed by those on Zoom. So the sign-in sheet I have tonight is auspiciously blank, but that doesn't preclude anyone from joining us at the podium if you'd like to. So anyone who's here who would like to address council during the public comment period in person, please do so. Otherwise, I will turn with the clerk's assistance to those appearing on Zoom. And it appears Mr. Haugen has his hand raised. Mr. Haugen, you're up.
Dennis Haugen from Sioux Falls, South Dakota. You can hear me, I hope.
We can, sir.
Okay. Things are looking up. As everyone knows, we've been attacked by crime from open borders and inflation and whatnot. But I particularly liked a comment by one very important person, Governor of Arkansas, Sarah Huckabee Sanders. In one of her comments, she said, "We're really not divided by left and right, conservative and liberal. Who we're divided by in the situation that's going on is the difference between normal and crazy." And it, and every city in the nation now has been affected by drug deaths, killings, murder, just by a bad decision of not finishing the border wall, which was very successful. And of course, we're in other financial messes as well. But many of the things that they're starting to attack in many states is banning critical race theory, and the whole garbage can full of ideas don't work. Imagine if you try to apply the word equity. In other words, in school, you don't have to, you learn that you don't have to be tops in your class or middle in your class, or at the bottom, you get a grade anyway. That would destroy a lot of industries. Because do you want to go to a doctor that didn't, didn't get good grades in school or in med school? Do you want to fly on an airplane? We even have to take the scoreboards down in the sports games because somebody has to lose and might hurt somebody's feelings. And then we're really starting to attack across the country what's been going on in the schools. What's been going on in the schools is awful. And, and it's going on in every school, including probably yours. So it's good to see those movements starting, and we've got a very strong bunch of people that are going to be, look like running for president. There are videos that you can look up that I presented. You can learn how the ball is built. You can learn about Nikki Haley and her successes in economics, Tim Scott, President Trump. And they're all going to be probably speaking on the presidential run, but I suspect they all end up in, in one administration. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last individual I see with their virtual hand raised, but we'll give a few minutes here. Any others who would like to address counsel during the public comment period while on Zoom, please raise your hand. Any others that you see, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we have no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Very good. I will declare the public comment period closed. We now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the City Council study session of February 13, 2023. B, approval of the minutes of the City Council meeting of February 21, 2023. C, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $6,318,227.85 for the period of January 21, 2023, through February 22, 2023. D, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $2,844,931.26 for the period of January 16, 2023, through February 15, 2023. E, motion number 2023-21, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with Tangram Design LLC for the Park and Reader Board Sign Project. F, motion number 2023-22, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement related to the Wards Lake Park property acquisition. G, motion number 2023-23, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with B.C.R.A. in the amount of $410,512 for the Wards Lake Park Improvement Project Phase One and Phase Two. H, motion number 2023-24, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Public Restroom Company in the amount of $648,780 for the American Lake Park Restroom and Site Amenities Expansion Project. I, motion number 2023-25, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with Robert W. Droll Landscape Architect in the amount of $47,179 for the American Lake Park Access Improvement Project. J, motion number 2023-26, authorizing the execution of professional services agreements associated with the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation Grant. K, motion number 2023-27, approving this disposal through surplus of vehicle 42221, a boom truck formerly used to maintain the city of Lakewood's traffic signal system. L, motion number 2023-28, authorizing the execution of necessary agreements and forms related to the Washington opioid settlement. M, items filed in the Office of the City Clerk, One Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of February 1, 2023.
Well, thank you very much. As council knows, many of these items, if not all of them, we have reviewed in study sessions previous to tonight. But that said, is there any item which any council member wishes to remove from the consent agenda at this time? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Move of option of the consent agenda as presented.
Been moved by Councilmember Bran Stetter, seconded by Deputy Mayor Moss, that we adopt a consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? On favor, certified by Saint I. I, any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted. We now turn to the regular agenda, public hearings and appeals. Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing on the request to vacate 113th Street Southwest, lying west of Kendrick Street Southwest.
Thank you very much. And for this particular public hearing, we will turn to Frank Sawatsky, our Associate Civil Engineer, for a brief overview.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. There's a proposal by Washington &amp; Wright LLC to vacate that portion of 113th Street west of its intersection with Kendrick. The right-of-way is a budding property owned by Washington &amp; Wright LLC. The proposed, the proponent proposes to incorporate all this section of right-of-way into their property for the purpose of developing an apartment complex. A property appraisal has been conducted. The appraised value of this land as of October 21, 22, is $340,000. History of this land is it was dedicated to public use by the creative name of "Street", with the plat of Kendrick Edition in 1953. Additional property was added to this right-of-way by the settlement of Pierce County Superior Court Cause 134393 in 1959. Currently, this part of 113th Street identified for the proposed vacation is a dead end, does not connect through to any other street or alley. It cannot be extended to connecting any other street without a forfeiture of private properties. It is surrounded north and south by the proponent of the vacation and terminates into the easterly boundary of St. Clair's Hospital. On February 6, 2023, the Lakewood City Council passed Resolution Number 2023-02, setting a public hearing regarding the proposed vacation for this evening, March 6, 2023. Notice of the public hearing was published in the Tacoma News Tribune. A placard was posted on the site. Mailers were sent to property owners within 300 feet of the proposed vacation, along with local utility companies. Staff has not received any written nor verbal objections to the proposed vacation. Lakewood Water District has expressed the need to maintain easements on the property for utilities maintenance. However, with this vacation, an agreement to extinguish those easements may be achieved within 60 days. The recommended conditions of the vacation are listed in the staff report, and the staff recommends council hold the public hearing this evening, and then staff will prepare an ordinance for the city consideration at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sawatsky. Any questions of Mr. Sawatsky on the presentation? This is the public hearing on this particular item on the request to vacate 113th Street Southwest, lying west of Kendrick Street Southwest. Public testimony on the hearing is accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Testimony may be submitted in advance by mail or email to the city clerk, at bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Testimony on this public hearing received up to an hour before the meeting has been provided to the council electronically, and the clerk will now read the names of those who have submitted testimony in advance, if any.
Mayor, we received no public testimony in advance of this evening's meeting.
Thank you. Testimony during the public hearing is limited to three minutes per person. Again, live virtual testimony is also authorized by the council. If you'd like to provide live virtual public testimony, you will need to join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number listed on the screen, entering the meeting ID number as indicated and, or visiting zoom.us and entering the meeting ID number indicated on the screen. Please use the raise a hand feature to be called upon. For those participating in by telephone, you may also use the raise a hand feature by pressing star nine on your phone. Madam Clerk, I see no individuals signed in to address counsel during the public hearing tonight, and I don't know if you see anyone appearing virtually for the public hearing.
Dennis Haugen.
Mr. Haugen.
All I have to say is I want you to keep in mind your ideology and what you teach in the school. Equity.
This has nothing to do with the public hearing, Mr. Haugen. This is simply based.
Aren't you going to, isn't the road being vacated in order to build an apartment?
It's being vacated. I have no idea the utilization, but it's being vacated.
Oh, okay.
The question for the council is to simply vacate that portion of the street elucidated by the engineer.
No problem.
Very good. Any other members of the public that have their virtual hand raised, Ms. Schumacher, to provide testimony during the public hearing?
Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Very good. Then I will declare the public hearing closed. We now turn to unfinished business. Mr. Coffield.
There is none, Mayor.
How about new business?
Not this evening, Mayor.
Great. So we'll turn now to reports by the city manager, Mr. Coffield. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, council members. First up, I'd like to call upon our Communications Manager, Bryn Grimley, to give you an overview of our proposal for the city to move forward with developing a DEIB strategic plan. This is a key initiative and goal that the council identified about a year ago or so. And so this is our proposal to actually develop that. So with that, Ms. Grimley.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. I'm Bryn Grimley, Communications Manager for the city. And this evening and before you, to just share with you information that I know actually you've already received in various updates from the city manager, but we're ready to move forward with the next steps with the formation of a DEI strategic plan for the city. And with that, we're bringing for a recommendation to hire Henderworks Inc. consultants, which will work with the city and closely with the executive leadership team on a multi-phase process to develop that plan. And attached in the packet this evening was a scope of work and a little different additional information about that process. So I welcome any questions or comments you may want to share.
Thank you. Ms. Grimley, any questions or comments on the information presented? Mr. Branstetter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Grimley. I mean, this is work that certainly is the council has been looking to have, have done, perhaps overdue in that we're finally getting settled on a process that certainly looks to be, to be workable. I'm just trying to get a clear understanding in the, in the, in the plan about the, the end state. And it looks like we're talking about a timeline that could run out to 2024 and beyond. That, and I'm wondering, as, as the plan is envisioned, it looks like it's envisioned of starting to work on things internally within the city to be able to go and do that. But once we work on that, how is it envisioned that then this will expand to the community or the city then building the same strengths in terms of equity and inclusion going forward? Or is that a plan beyond this plan?
Correct. Yeah, I think the, the, the first phase of this is just working internally, as you stated, and, and working within our operations and to a degree that will have an effect on how staff do their day-to-day work, both internally and externally with the, the public. But as far as the development, you know, this will be the first step is the strategic plan. From there, there will be additional work that will be done in, in the years to come on that external, external component. So I would expect that we would be coming back to you with additional information about that once we get to that point. But we can't get to that point until we've addressed the internal point with the development of the strategic plan.
The plan seems to include surveying, looking for input and feedback as the process goes along from throughout the, the city to do that. I guess what is the intent of the those of us on the dais here of participating in that, of being either recipients of training or of writers of feedback and input at the various stages? I couldn't necessarily. There's a lot of use of the word staff as opposed to the word employees and things to do that. But I think that those of us on the dais here have a role to play, or certainly have a role that can influence the environment in the city.
Correct. Yes, so under the scope of work, the very actually first, one of the very first things that'll be done is the assessment of leadership. And that will include both a meeting with the consultant, with the executive leadership team members and members of the city council. So council will be a part of that interview process that he does. And then I expect as we work with him to get a little bit more of the details ironed out. As for how we move forward, you know, council will continue to be a part of that conversation and be brought in appropriately where the consultant determines is the best, best route for the work that we're doing.
Well, certainly, Mr. Henderson has excellent credentials, both in terms of the types of organizations that he's, that he's worked with and the size of them, but also with respect to the results that that he's achieved based on the feedback from those organizations he was, he was trying to help. And so I, I am positive that that's being a choice. I guess I'll just make one final comment on the, on the plan that's here. You know, we talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion being the three pillars of DEI. That the plan seems to be heavy in its focus on diversity and equity. And there's not a lot of mention in terms of inclusion. And maybe that's because it's, it's inclusion is hard to envision. But in, in my personal view of the three, inclusion is the most important outcome to strive for, to be able to go and do that. I mean, we have a community that has diversity. We have a city that has diversity amongst its, its, its employees and its stakeholders. You know, but, but diversity is a number. Okay? I mean, you can achieve diversity by doing things to, to. Okay, I mean, you can achieve diversity by doing things to to deal with numbers. That um. You know, uh. Equity is kind of a process. Goal. You need to have processes so that everybody is know that. But well, getting to inclusion is inclusion is the uh. Has to do with the. Hmm the way that people who are part of your organization feel. How they feel about themselves and they feel about each other. And so in terms of long-term outcomes. Uh the outcomes around inclusion. To me are very important because. Hmm if you need to change, you need to not just change diversity or just not change your processes. But real change is when you get to changes in the inclusion. And inclusion is defined by. The members of your organization collectively. You know, how do they see each other and and being able to go and do that? So that is. You and Ms. Kraus work with Mr. Henderson to manage this. Process. Um you know, I I you. I I want you to at least focus beyond checking. Diversity and equity blocks and get to real impacts of inclusion. So which is what really will make a make a difference uh. In 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 how we operate and in how and 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 how we work together. And well, but 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 thank thank you for. Bringing the presentation here. I'm glad to see that we got a timeline that we're going to be able to work on during this fiscal biennium. And uh. I look forward to participating in the process. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Um so I had a couple of questions on this. Um. I think it's definitely long overdue, so I'm very excited to see that this is happening. But I was looking. I get that this is internal. Maybe I'm just unclear on this. So what? Is the external part? Because it seems that when you're surveying leadership, you would also survey leadership within the community. In order to create a more cohesive strategic plan that would serve the entire. City of Lakewood. So me seeing not seeing the external portion on this, when is that coming in? Um it just seems like a major missing part not to survey the community, your stakeholders, your key players. And put that a part of the timeline in there. So I just was looking for a little bit more explanation on that.
Councilmember Bell, if I may, counsel. Um if you recall during your. Goal-setting retreat about it was about two years ago when you talked about this. Um you you actually spent quite a bit of time formulating the specific goal. And the direction that you provided was first and foremost, you wanted the development of a DEI strategic plan focused internally. And not to go external until. Essentially, you know, we have evaluated who and what we are. Um and then identify a path forward from that point. So that's that's why the focus is 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 solely internal at this point in time. And as um Ms. Grimley commented earlier, um. You know, at some time when this is done, if the council then wishes to update that goal to then move externally, we can certainly do that at that time.
Any other questions? I think the gentleman's credentials uh are going to be great for this process for Lakewood. He seems like obviously very well qualified and. We have a stake in not only the process, but the outcome. I look forward to the meetings that he will conduct with each one of us, apparently as well the executive leadership team. It looks like we do get feedback after those interviews, so. We will be engaged in the the process from beginning to end. Great. Thank you. And then I think, did you have some other? Thoughts you want to bring up, Mr. Coffield, on these other two ARP items?
Well, yes, Mayor, I I do have some droning and droning to go on.
Great.
So I know you always look forward to that.
Here, I have a cookie, so.
I know. And if you and if you run short, I'd be more than happy to.
Exactly.
Donate mine to you. Um actually, in all seriousness, just um wanted to note that we're in the process of finalizing. The the trip to Gimhe, Republic of Korea, and I know several of you are going to be um attending that. So we have nailed down the. Um um departure departure date as well as the return date. So we'll be looking to leave on Wednesday, um May third in the morning, and because of the. Change in the international dateline and such, we will arrive in in Gimhe on Thursday at about six PM. And then um the festival that Gimhe is putting on, of which we are going to be um asked to attend as honored guests. Um will be on Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Closing ceremonies will be about seven PM on Sunday. Um we will then leave uh Republic of Korea on Monday morning at ten fifty. And then we will arrive back in the United States about ten fifty on Monday, again, because we gain a day coming back. So um that's the um that's the kind of the agenda at this point in time. Um what we will need, what the city clerk and I need is we need your name and we need your date of birth so we can book your tickets as well as if you're going to be. Bringing your spouse. And I think a couple of you are planning on doing that. And then also just a friendly reminder, make sure that your passports are up to date. And if they're not, that's going to take some time. So something to just think about there. Um. So that's um that's kind of uh uh where we are with that. And I know the city clerk is also in conversation. With our our contact, I remember her June um in in get from Gimhe when she when they were visiting with us um late last year. So. Um they're also going to help us with hotel accommodations as well as transportation. Um the uh Pierce County Library System, their Board of Trustees is going to have their monthly meeting later this week on Wednesday, and there's two items on the agenda that we believe are of importance to our community. The first is is that the board is going to be considering a construction contract to move forward with constructing an interim library. At the intersection of Gravel Lake Drive and Alferata um street and um that um. So that contract again is on their agenda and they're looking to um the interim library. The the size is going to be anywhere from seventy-five hundred to ten thousand square feet. Again, it's an interim library. Um and then um later on in the meeting, they are also, they be in the Board of Trustees is going to be considering. The next steps regarding the current library, which they closed last May or early June um in two thousand twenty-two. And uh really, the two options are, do they want to um, you know, refurbish, renovate the library? Or do they essentially want to remove it or demolish the building? It would appear from their agenda and and the recommendations that's presented to them. It's the latter, which is to um demolish um the building, given its um structural engineering um. Condition, which um the library district undertook like, you know, the last couple of years, and all those reports are online for the public to be able to access. Um after that, their next, my understanding and talking with their executive director, their next step is then to identify, okay, do they want to? Build a new permanent library on that location. Um and and they have done some prelim- very preliminary work, and um if they were to do that, unfortunately, they would not be able to incorporate a senior community center into that. It's just not big enough. To be able to accommodate that. Um however, if they were to look at another alternative, which is, you know, this body, your goals going back ten, twelve, fourteen, fifteen years. Has been that if they do build a new library, that they build it in the town down downtown area to serve as, among other things, an economic catalyst for. Development and redevelopment investment, but also to attract people to the downtown. And so that's the message that we have continually communicated. To the library, including the new executive director, and she gets that. But of course, the decision-making is in the hands of the board, the board of trustees. If they do move to a different location, there would be an opportunity for the city to then partner with the library on that. So um. Long story short, the library district is moving forward. Um I would also like to point out that um in in terms of building the interim library. Um, you know, they they the 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 funding that they collect from Lakewood citizens in both two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four is going to be used to help finance that. So uh. So the money that the tax monies that they're collecting are being put to put to use. And again, that's called out in their in their staff report and their agenda for 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 May eighth. I'd also like to report that um our team working in partnership with LASSA did submit the two and a half million dollar federal earmark request to um. Our congressional delegation, um starting with Congresswoman Strickland. And uh also um um we helped them get some letters of support. I think they received fifteen in total, including one from. From from this from this body. So um that will be a point of discussion, uh Mayor and Deputy Mayor, when we go back to Washington DC and meet with the delegation. And also, um the executive director of LASSA is going to be meeting us back there and will accompany us on the meeting so that she can ask some of the answer some of the specific questions if they should come up from the delegation on. On that. Um last Wednesday, um which was March first, we were um we learned that um Lehi, um which is um. A housing provider, um who we who who um also own Aspen Court over in Tacoma, of which the city helped um partner with. Uh they acquired Candlewood Suites for twenty point two million dollars. And uh it's our our understanding that this facility will be very similar in terms of what Aspen Court is going to be, which is to focus on transitional housing. And um they um uh looking to name it the Maureen Howard Place. Uh Ms. Howard, you might know, is a longtime advocate. In the Tacoma Pierce County area for um underserved and um homeless individuals, among other things. And uh so that's where the name has come from. Um based on the size, I think that I think the hotel it says has like eighty-five or eighty-four rooms. So they're going to have seventy-seven suites for about eighty-five people, and they're going to be able to accommodate couples, singles, as well as um pets. Um and then they're going to have um some areas that are going to be converted into case management offices and things along those lines. They are going to have staff on site twenty-four hours um a day, and they'll be helping people who. They're accommodating there to obtain permanent housing, employment, healthcare, you know, all kinds of things that, you know, get back on your feet. Um so that's um that's what they're doing. Um we have recommended that they do two things since they're coming to our community. The first is that they hold and facilitate a public meeting with the surrounding neighborhoods. And um not just explain to them what they're doing, who they are, what they are, but also um obtain feedback, input and anything that the neighborhoods might have concerns about. And so the city is working with them to try and identify a location for um that to happen. As you know, um we at one time, there was a very active neighborhood association out there, and actually, the president. Of that association is still around. And so Mr. Buhr, who knows him very well, is going to be reaching out to him and you um, you know, h- helping formulate that. Um once Lehi has done that, including getting feedback and 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 the like. It's um suggested that perhaps they come and they make a presentation to this body at some time in the future, again, to communicate specifically, you know, what they're doing. Um as well as mitigating any of the concerns and issues that, of course, the neighborhoods have brought up, as well as any issues that the city um and and our partners have. Have identified as they go through this process of transitioning this from um a hotel to a um essentially a shelter. Um I also wanted to report and really want to commend our Assistant Police Chief John Unfred on this. You might recall, there was an op-ed in the uh TNT by. Uh one of our state legislators, as well as another um regarding the impact of House Bill ten fifty-four, which was approved by the state legislature back in two thousand twenty-one. Um and 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 they quoted a report that was developed by the uh Pierce County County Council, their audit committee. And when we took a look at that, we were a little perplexed, we'll just say, uh based on the results of that. And the reason being is because we provided them all of that information. They did a PDR request and we provided it. And I will just say. That how they presented that information is completely different and opposite of how. We know the information to be. So AC Unfred reached out to the analyst and had a number of questions. And long story short. The analyst recognized that first and foremost, um saying that alludes in pursuit to the same thing um is. You know, that's like saying Coke and Pepsi are the same thing. Um they're not. They're very, very different. And. So um, you know, the analyst is going to be making a change to that. Um in addition, the analyst um realized that there was a whole lot of data. That was not included in the report and was an oversight on his part. So um the analyst will be going back and um essentially updating the report. The challenge is is that the op-ed that the the two elected leaders did. Um is now based on a report that, or at least from Lakewood side, maybe, you you know, other parts of the report are okay, but at least the information from Lakewood. Um is not accurate and it's not, it's wrong. It's outright wrong. Um so AC Unfred then um went through and um compiled the data based on, you know, what the empirical evidence shows. And um it shows a completely different picture of what that op-ed said. Now, maybe that. Maybe maybe that's the same as, you know, the the other agency that was included in there was was the Sheriff's Department. By the way, the only reason it was the Sheriff's Department and the City of Lakewood and not other agencies is because we're the only ones that track this information. We're the only ones that track pursuits and eludes. So others do not do it. And um let me just um kind of hit a couple of key highlights of what the data does show. And again, it compares. Um pursuits and eludes prior prior to and post. Um House Bill ten fifty-four that took effect on July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. And I know for you all, this is not a surprise because our previous police chief, um Mike Zarro, was adamant about sharing this information with you. Um but what it shows is that, you know, the number of pursuits that we have on a monthly basis actually decreased. From about, you know, three point two a month to a little over two a month. So first of all, the number of pursuits we have is negligible to begin with, but it's actually pursuits have actually decreased. Um however, eludes, which is drivers fleeing from. Police officers for valid. Um infractions or crimes, mostly crimes. We're talking about stolen motor vehicles, I mean, um robberies, burglaries, the list, the list goes on. Um. Has actually increased almost seven hundred percent from forty-nine to three hundred ninety ninety-eight and growing. And I know you saw some. Information just the last week about um, you know, s- several of those. One, one was where um some individuals pulled. The um ATM out of a local bank and then was driving down the street and the police were chasing after him. Um and then the the safe um was cut away from from the vehicle and then the vehicle went speeding off. And guess what? Officers were not allowed to chase that vehicle. Um this weekend, we um had a very dutiful uh police officer doing patrolling over at the Sounder Station. Was up on the fourth floor, fifth floor, top floor of of the Sounder parking garage and heard a very, very loud noise. The officer um went over to the edge of of the garage and saw a um. Uh it was either an F two fifty or an F three fifty go barreling through the um. The fence of Lakewood Ford. It was a vehicle that was being stolen from the inside to the outside. He called it in. Another vehicle caught up with this stolen vehicle not too far away. All the driver had to do. Step on the pedal and off they went. Could not pursue that. And and again, those are just two recent examples. These are happening day in and day out. So um our recommendation is that we develop our own op-ed. To again, communicate what the empirical info, what the empirical data shows and what the facts are. Um we have reached out, Ms. Grimley has reached out to the TNT, to their op-ed editor, and um they have agreed to accommodate our request. So we're going to be working on that and um we'll be sharing that with you um, you know, in the next week or so. Probably take a little bit of time to get together because it is an op-ed and we just don't want to, you know, just throw something together. And um so um just wanted to share that with you, Mayor and Council. Um and then kind of along those lines. And I was talking to um Councilmember Bell earlier today, and um, you know, our legislators are going to be hoping hosting, you know, their own town hall meetings, you know, um in in this month. Um March eleventh, uh the twenty-ninth district is going to be holding one on March eighteenth. Um our two represented in the twenty-eighth and then another one on March eighteen, March uh eighteenth, oh, two on March eighteenth. And um so what we're going to do is we're going to actively promote that to our community and just let them know. And also just share anecdotal information, which is because one of the things, the number one thing that we hear from the community is. You know, what's going on? What's going on with, you know, um all the stolen vehicles and the property crimes and things? And why aren't you doing anything about it? Um I know Don Anderson received an email today from somebody and said, you know, what can we, you know, how was it? Um. What can we count on government to do? Well, here's my answer. My answer is government has created this. I I I don't want to burst anybody's bubble. But that's that's the answer. And meanwhile, at the local level, at the city and the county level, we're left holding. And meanwhile, at the local level, at the city and the county level, we're left holding the bag on this. And so hopefully, this will be an opportunity for some folks to come and just communicate, you know, their concerns to our legislators so that as they're considering bills to, to address these, you know, criminal activities, this huge increase, which, by the way, are, actually, I would also like to just go back. And one of the things that we have also experienced was that not only have vehicle thefts doubled, but collisions have increased as well, not because of pursuits, but because of people driving around recklessly. You know, and I also want to point out and echo what Chief Zaro said when he was here, which is, it's, it's not a lot of people doing this. It's a small group of people who are creating havoc, uncertainty, and just this feeling of, of being unsafe in their own communities, in their own backyards. And something, and something needs to be done about it. And it shouldn't be that difficult, quite frankly, to resolve this. So that's my rant. I apologize, Mayor, but I just want to let you know we're working on it.
I appreciate it. I will follow up rant with rant for a moment, because I think we're on the same rant. The issue that many citizens have, of course, as you've articulated, is what's going on with the craziness that they see, much of which has to do with this pursuit slash allude issue. And the gentleman that Councilmember Anderson wrote back to is a perfect example. And I think, as you noted, the problem stems with government. And as I articulated when Chief Zaro was here, my frustration when that day we received the op-ed written by one of our representatives in the 29th with whatever data she received. The problem with government, as you well know, is unless you have good data, you don't make the best policy decisions. So in advance of the town hall that she will be hosting, I want to make sure that the op-ed with as good of data as possible is provided to her in advance, if not already published, because I want to give her the courtesy that we didn't receive, to make sure she has a heads up before it goes public. Because it's irritating, to say it mildly, that we didn't get a call to verify the data before that went public, educating or purporting to educate members of our community about what the stats were when they weren't. And so maybe we connect with Shelley Helder and make a, communicate to our representatives to say, this is coming, and you've invited this response, but it's coming.
You know, and in fairness to the two, you know, the representative and the senator, they were, they were basing their op-ed off of a faulty county report.
But it referenced Lakewood and they didn't call us.
That's correct. They, they did not reach out to us and give us a courtesy. That's correct.
Yep. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just so you know, I have been asked to work with the Deputy Mayor, with the mayor from DuPont on the 18th as a moderator, so I'd like to meet with you prior to. The one, Mary, the one at Club of Technical College on the 18th. Thank you.
With that, Mayor, Council, that's my report.
Great. Any questions, Mr. Coffield? Very good. Appreciate the update, and I believe, maybe I'll, I'll hit this off, since Mr. Coffield is here. During our council comments, we want to provide some direction to staff on possible utilization of ARPA funds in support of two opportunities, of which we have some information before us tonight. One is Springbrook Connections. They made an ARPA request for approximately $50,000 to cover the cost of the lease of the Center Force Building in 2023. And I think Mr. Coffield provided some information, but can also give a brief update on that. The second is what we've heard of previously, the Dolly Parton Imagination Library support. Given the issue of library services here in Lakewood, this came up as an opportunity to provide eligible children in Lakewood with free books for early, early learning use and education opportunities. So I don't know if you are comfortable, Mr. Coffield, to give us a little bit more information on either one or both of these?
I think certainly on the, the first one, I can, Mayor. So Springbrook Connections requested ARPA funds as part of a past process about a year and a half ago from, from, from the, to the city council. And, you know, Springbrook Connections is, you know, they've been around a long time, working in the Springbrook neighborhood, really doing some good, good work, quite frankly. I know one of the questions that came up at your meeting on February 21st was, are they a registered 501(c)(3) charitable organization? Or they are their own fiscal, or do they have a fiscal agent that serves in that capacity? And they are now a bona fide 501(c)(3) charitable organization. I'm not quite sure when that changed, but at one time, I know they, they did have another agency. It might have been the Health Department or even the county that served as their fiscal agent, but that is no longer the case or, or the situation. And what they're trying to do is they're trying to serve as and create a family resource center, partnering with the Health Department, to, again, serve the Springbrook community. And I'm not going to go through the one pager that's before you, but those are, you know, some great services that I think we all recognize that the Springbrook neighborhood could certainly, you, you could certainly benefit from. So, you know, and, and the $50,000 that, that they're requesting would be used to help pay for their lease for their first year. They have, it's our understanding that they have negotiated a lease to utilize a portion of the Center Force Building. And so that's what they're, that's what they're ask, that's what their ask is at this point in time. The Dolly Parton Imagination Library, so I know that this has come up before. And long story short, this is a way to get, you know, you know, children engaged to, you know, reading, reading books and, and, and alike. And, you know, the way it works is that it's, it's like a city or a school district can sponsor it, or even, I don't even think a library district can. It has to be like a local nonprofit. And the Rotary Club of Lakewood has volunteered to take that on, but then to also bring in the school district, the library district, as well as the city. And the way it works, it's, it's incremental over a, you know, one, two, three, four, five-year period, where funding is provided to the organization that serves this point. And then they work with this, you know, the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. And the school district, their role is to help provide addresses of, you know, the kids who they think would be eligible and/or would benefit from receiving a book or books on a regular basis. And you can see there that there's a dollar amount associated with each book. You know, we've just done some off-the-cuff analysis, and over a three- or four-year period, you know, if the city was to contribute thirty or forty thousand dollars, I think that would certainly be a step in the right direction to get this going. And again, it's not something where, you know, we, you, you send out a blast to, you know, hundreds and hundreds of families. It's, it's an incremental approach. You start off with, you know, a small group, and then you grow it the next year, the year after, and, and, and so forth. So that's kind of what we know about the program. We have heard that where it's been implemented, it's been highly successful in allowing children to get access to books that otherwise they wouldn't have, either through their school or through the local library.
Very good. Any questions, Mr. Branstadter?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Coffield. Regarding the Imagination Library, and I understand that it is a program that gets started and then it ramps up with higher and higher percentages of enrollment. That, and, and, and what we were provided essentially was a five-year plan. So with respect to dedicating ARPA funds, where we have to dedicate them this biennium and spend them by the next biennium, how many years can ARPA funds actually fund? You know, assuming, assuming we'd be providing the funds to the Lakewood Rotary or similar group that ends up filling that role. But, you know, are we able to make a, within the window that ARPA funds can be obligated and spent fund the five years of a program? Or do we have to do it only within the 2026 horizon?
So Councilmember Branstadter, that's some, all right, let me take a, so I got a two-part response here. So under current federal law, the monies, ARPA, all ARPA funds have to be spent by December, have to be first and foremost allocated by December 31st, might be December 15th, December of 2024, and have to be spent to the last penny by December, by December of 2026. That's current federal law as it relates to ARPA. Second, highly likely that Congress is going to make some changes to that. That's the, kind of the scuttlebutt that we're hearing. And the reason being is because there's a number of states and local governments that are probably going to have money left over as you look out into '25 and '26. Now, with that said, once we have a better understanding and a plan of what our specific Lakewood Imagination Library is going to look like, it could be that we could provide the funding, the five-year funding to the nonprofit, and then that they would be able to continue to use that money after 2026. Because our response would be, okay, we spent it, we gave it to the agency, and they're utilizing it. So that would be something that we would need to check on. So. So that's kind of where we are.
So what would be the best methodology for the city to use to determine the size of an allocation?
So that's a great question, Councilmember, and I don't have the answer to that. That's something that we'll need to primarily get from the school district to get their input and feedback on that as the Lakewood Rotary Club kind of takes the initiative on that. I don't have an answer for you on that right now.
Okay, but then is process, meaning we need to have an actual request from the Lakewood Rotary?
That's correct. That's correct. But, but you as the council, you know, you've talked about this. You know, actually, what I'm looking for tonight, what I would like from the council tonight is not so much for you to give me direction to bring back, well, I am for Springbrook Connections. But for, for this particular one, what I'm looking for is consensus that this is something that the council, you know, for sure is interested in so that, you know, myself and our team can then go work with the Rotary Club and go work with the school district and the library to bring back a bona fide proposal in terms of how it would work from a mechanical standpoint.
Yeah, well, I, Mr. Mayor, for one, I would like to see the city reach out and begin to actively work with the Rotary to, to, to confirm that the Rotary sees themselves in this role and being able to go forward and do it. I think we do a lot of things for young people in this community, you know, we're really good at it, but not so much for zero-to-five-year-olds. You know, and, and this, 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 this fills our gap in terms of the, you know, our, our promises to, to, to young people to, to, to do that. So I'd be interested to see whether we can make it happen and if we have in the Rotary or another partner, someone that has five or more years of staying power to see a program continue with resilience.
I can tell you that Lakewood Rotary is taking this on as one of its projects. It will be the Raise the Paddle item at the March 24th fundraising event for the Imagination Library. So I, I think they're taking the mantle on that. I can bring back more information though specifically, and if we need to have a speaker come to present, happy to do that. Yep, Mr. Boki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Coffield, the Springbrook Connections thing. So there currently is not a family resource center in that neighborhood? Or do they already have it up and running and and we're just being asked to help fund it in the building? Or is there not a, is there a family resource center in the Springbrook neighborhood currently?
My understanding, Councilmember Boki, is there, there is not.
So when I, I'm in air, actually. I thought a few years ago, the Health Department left all the family resource centers in Lakewood, or they had one and they closed it. But now, when I pulled up the information on the website tonight, on the Health Department, there's actually one here on Gravel Lake Drive. But I, I don't know much about it. I'm, I'm in favor of helping out, because I think Springbrook Connections has been working in that neighborhood for quite some time and has shown a real dedication to that neighborhood over a long period of time. I think that they, they're all in and they're vested in the community. So I, I'm just wondering, though, what are they going to do in the out years? What's their ability? How are they going to figure out? Did you have any discussion with them about when 2024 comes around and the rent is $50,000, how they're going to pay that?
We have not, Councilmember Boki, because again, their request is some initial seed money to pay that first year of rent, and then they'll work with the Health Department to, you know, identify future funding streams.
Okay. So Imagination Library, I feel like, hopefully, this is going to be a long-term thing for this community, but we are under the ARPA spending guidelines, so through the end of the biennium. So I'm fine with you having those conversations. I'm all, I'm all for this, because this is actually a concrete thing that we can do to help kids. And so I'm in, I'm in favor of those discussions. I just think it's one of those things that through 2026 is fine, some kind of cost-sharing agreement. After that, they're probably going to have to go into the 1% is what, is what I'm thinking to try to compete in that. Because that's really our, our one dedicated source towards, towards something like that. But if, if we end up having the ARPA money, that, that still, that date still holds. So it'll be interesting discussions going forward if we get more time to spend it. But, so I'm in, I'm very much in favor of the Imagination Library. I, I would point out that there's a group that actually has a warehouse here in Lakewood, but it's a national company that actually gives out books to school-age kids called Discover Books. And so, and they, they actually give out a large number of books through the schools and new end-use books, I believe. So I'm all in favor. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Coffield, on the library meeting, when, where, and what time do they meet?
They meet on Wednesday, May 8th, and they meet over at their headquarters, which is on 112th and, in Parkland. And I don't know the time offhand, but I can get that to you. I want to say 3:00 PM, but let me get back to you on that, Deputy Mayor.
Okay. And the reason I was asking is because the people that are questioning us, I can direct them there, they can ask directly. So.
Very good. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Any other questions, Mr. Coffield? So it looks like we've got consensus for sure on Springbrook. Is that correct, everyone? So that gives you the thumbs up you need for that. Looks like we've got a tentative knot of support on the Imagination Library, but we need to get some further information from Rotary to confirm that they're going to be the local agent on that. So we'll, we've got time, but we'll bring that back at a further study session if need be, and I'll let you know when we can get some folks here. The one question I had, you know, in, in connection with Springbrook Connections, is Woodbrook. Do we know what and where the community center is over there in Woodbrook? I'm concerned, because I had a coffee meeting with a local person. Apparently, the, one of the coordinators over there passed away, Janet, I forget her last name. And so I, I just don't know where Telecom is, if it's rudderless, they need help, where they are with that building. What we may need to do to step in and provide some interim help, Mr. Branstadter?
Well, the Community Service Center, that they're having some turnover on their board because they're, they have had a couple board members leave and one die. they, they have had a couple board members leave and one die. That the, um, the, the Community Service Center has operated essentially two functions. They have, or three, depending on what I want to do that. Um, but internally, they have operated a clothing bank. And they've operated a essentially an information desk that people could come to and get information about where to go, wherever in the county to do that. And then they have leased out or provided space in the building, um, to the, the, the C Mar Health Clinic, uh, to the library system and to, um, Catholic Community Services and another organization that, so that three times, three days a week, there's, there's a meal site there for, for noon meal. Um, the Catholic Community Services provides a senior meal site and the, the, the other organization is a Japanese local group, and so there's, there's one Japanese meal that goes and, and do that. The, uh, the senior meal site is primarily focused and gets residents who are relatively local from, from that community, but also from Lakewood and DuPont and some other things. Uh, the Japanese meal site draws participants from a much broader area. Uh, from Federal Way, Lacey in terms to do that, and it's as much of a social activity as it is a Japanese ethnic meal site to be able to go and do that. The, the organization has a long history of being very challenged with its respect to its, to it, to its funding uh, in terms of being able to go and do that. Uh, their principal source of, of funding is they get some money from the county, but the, 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 the meal site programs pay them some rent for, for, for those items and the, and, 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 and the medical clinic is and the biggest, they, they, they have a footprint of, of almost 40% of the building that they, they have been paying rent for. Uh, there are some challenges with the medical clinic because it's, uh, had to cut back on the kind of services it's, it can offer because of staffing challenges. Um, but it remains a, the only real medical provider i- in, in that neighborhood. Um, so, you know, 20 years ago, I was on that, I was on that board and it was challenged to do that, and there was a situation where it is a count, was a county owned a building, uh, billed with, with HUD, um, HUD dollars. Um, and at that time, uh, we on the, on the board of the Community Services Center, Pierce County actually put out an RFP that said any nonprofit that would like to take over this building and operate it and maintain it um, could, could apply, and there were a number of agencies that applied, uh, to do a variety of different things, um, you know, uh, some, some, some were drug rehab, some drug rehabilitation, some, some a variety of nonprofits, uh, Center Force was even one that, that did that. But the county finally accepted the proposal from the Community Services Center Board for them to essentially become the landlords of the building. With the weight of the argument being is that they serve that community in a lot of ways, and so it just goes on. And so it's, it, it, it still has potential to do that, but the building, like like the community center on, on Lakewood Drive and like the Lakewood Library, it's a, a generation of buildings that were in ownership that didn't necessarily invest or have the funds to invest in, in, in maintaining them. It has been a, a problem and, and they were, been re lot, there were a lot of discussions about the community center there of both before the, the county or that about giving it to the city, city taking ownership of it, but it was in such, it's one of those things that was just not an albatross, city could afford to take on from the maintenance standpoint, and I think that remains the case today. Um, that, um, so, so I don't know what the, the future is, but it, but it generally, the loss of a, of a major tenant like the, the medical clinic um, would, uh, would put that organization under, as I understand it, based on their, on their, 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 their last budgets and hopefully the, the, they, they rebuild, rebuild their board perhaps with some people that have some, some better fiscal wherewithal, uh, and, and idea to do that, they, they can stabilize it. The, 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 the Telecom Woodbrook Neighborhood Association is, while it has met there, they have no real operational relationship with the, the center other than that they they, they use the space and there is some overlap on some people that are involved, involved in each one. Um, you know, and that neighborhood association was, when dormant during, uh, during COVID is now met the last two months, but they're meeting on Monday evening, so we've not been able to have a council member um, be there, although I understand they've been in touch with the city and have gotten some city staff folks to come there to do that. But I think that the, you know, the, the bottom line is, uh, the, 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 the future of that um, service center is, is, is very dependent upon continuing to have some sufficient rental in, income to fund their two employees and, 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 and deal with the utilities related to the building. Um, and, but, uh, is, uh, but it's fragile.
Sounds like it, yeah. Well, thank you for that. Well, no other comments directed to Mr. Caulfield on these two items that we've reviewed and considered. A little bit for council comments, Mr. Boki. Okay, Ms. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. I just make a quick couple of comments. Um, I really appreciated the proclamation for Women's History Month, uh, today. And I wanted to say that I had a wonderful time attending LMCC's event on Friday, your inaugural event. I look forward to more. It was great and it was a great to honor Dr. Claudia Thomas. So thank you for taking that on and putting that on and presenting that to the community.
Mr. Branstad.
That, um, I had the, uh, the ability to attend the, the SHAPE Executive Board Meeting, uh, for Councilmember Boki, uh, in his absence. And that meeting last week was primarily focused on two subjects. It focused on, uh, there was a presentation from an organization called Arch, and Arch is a very similar organization, but that has been operating for 30 years up in King County in the western areas of the city of Bellevue, Kirkland, Yisikwa, 12 communities, uh, uh, up in that area of the county. Um, and, and, and they spoke about how they were organized and, and, and when, and what roles they have taken on. Um, of interest was, um, they have taken on a sort of a centralized processing and, uh, working with developers upon, with relationship to multifamily tax exemptions. And they both uh, you work on throughout their region, having sort of standardized, standardized contracts, uh, being able to go and do that. But they also, as an organization, uh, take on all of the reporting and monitoring of where annually you have to verify that that the right percentage of low income tenants are there and that they, 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 they take on that role as a single entity rather than each city having to do that itself for the projects that are in their area to be able to go and do that. Um, the other interesting thing that they had, who had to do with, um, they have fostered within those cities there some, uh, in their zoning code, some inclusionary zoning that essentially said even without a multifamily tax exemption, uh, that, uh, if you're going to build multifamily units over a certain number of units, then you have to make at least 10% low income. Uh, uh, affordable, being able to do that essentially in the same way that a multifamily tax exemption. And then if you get a multifamily tax exemption, then that, uh, that number moves up above 10. So, so there is no one building multifamily units that are 100% completely market rate because the, 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 the zoning permitting process that they have collectively all adopted by all the cities sort of says if you're going to be in the, in a multifamily housing development, then you're going to bill 10% uh, that way. Um, you know, and that is not a model that we have here in Pierce County, uh, you know, in any of our jurisdictions or that, you know, but it apparently is a model that is doable. Um, the one negative in the presentation is that they, 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 they were speaking about how they've been able to work with developers and do that and get affordable housing units built. And they indicated that they had around 9,000 units built over 30 years that they've been in existence, which was only a, what should I say, 300 a year when you, so, and when you, when you look at it from a Pierce County perspective of where we, we, we need to build 3,000 a year. Um, they, they were not necessarily, uh, uh, their, their, their methods in terms of working with developers and getting things done or not, uh, not, not necessarily achieving the results that we would, we're looking to emulate. Um, but I did find that the, 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 the SHAPE Executive Committee itself, and it was the first of their meetings that I had a chance to go as I was an alternate to it, um, was filled with folks that asked good questions to that presentation and then in, 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 in discussions about developing a a SHAPE work plan, um, both the staff and the, and the folks that were there had good questions as they were, as they were, as they were looking at trying to say, you know, where do we want to draw our box of where we're going to stay in, okay, uh, and, uh, and the, and, and, and Mr. Gaither, the, the executive director was earnest in saying, he, he, that he, he just needed that guidance so that he could focus himself and the person that he might get to work for him should, should they uh, let him go and do that. So, so it's a, it was a new organization. I, I came away from that first, my first meeting um, with, uh, they are focused on trying to meet the needs of communities, um, you know, and alleviated some of my uncertainty about when we were going into it about is it just going to be another organization that's just seeking to to have its mission creep and creep and, and, and the, uh, uh, my impression was that at this point in time, it's not. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I will start off with the LMCC event. I can tell you, I had a dream of how it was going to be, but it far exceeded what I, my expectations were, so. Thank you all for the support and the comments that I've received. Uh, the people that missed it, heard about it, now they want to come to the next one, so. It was a good advertisement, good time, and, uh, we had a lot of fun and everybody enjoyed the food, the music. Everything was good, so I didn't get any complaints. That was a good thing, so. The only other thing I have, Mr. Mayor and council members, is the fact that March marks the 50th year of the Air Force, of the Vietnamese War. And I would like to ask if you would support a proclamation to be read at one of our meetings, whenever that date might be. I'm state rep, uh, I'm Secretary for the State Air Force Association, and that came down through that organization, that the anniversary of the, would be 50 years that the war ended.
Oh, at the end of the Vietnam War?
Right.
Okay.
So if you guys would support that, that would be great.
We should be able to do that. Historically, that's about the right timeframe. Maybe we get a rep from both, uh, the 2-2, maybe Colonel West and maybe someone from the Air Force both? Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
There is a retired Colonel that serves on the Air Force, the state Air Force Association representative, so you could ask him.
Great.
Thank you.
Another person to, uh, consider, I think we all know Bob Warfield, he is, uh,
Oh, yeah.
He was, um, we'll just say knee deep in it, back in the day in Vietnam.
Coffee with him. He's such a passionate Lakewood guy, he'd probably be tickled pink to receive that.
Yeah, he was a frontline infantry officer.
Yeah.
As a first and second lieutenant.
He's so funny because he doesn't see, I don't want to say that old, but he doesn't seem that old. Vibrant young man.
Well, thank you for that. Thank you.
Great.
That's all I have.
Well, I just have a few things. I'll start off with the, uh, multicultural event. Thank you for the invite. Thank you for putting it on. It was a joy to attend and I received great comments. People enjoyed it. I think part of the reason why they enjoyed it was it wasn't so full that they had a chance to mix and mingle a little bit and just enjoy themselves. I think that was a, a real positive. So that was great. Yeah, very good. And then, uh, Deputy Mayor and I had a chance to celebrate Brandon Elliott, who was here tonight at Harrison Prep, uh, in the wonderful receipt of his Presidential Scholarship and Admission to the University of Washington by an admissions counselor who came to Harrison Prep. And we were in kind of the back room with the principal, his mother, he didn't know his mother had shown up. Uh, the admissions, uh, officer from University of Washington and then those of us, as well as the leadership from Harrison Prep. It was really touching to see that. I mean, I was just really touched. I, I get emotional over stupid movies, but that thing was just really fun to think about the impact that we can have and do have, uh, on the trajectory of many lives, including those young people who serve on the youth council. That's a pretty cool thing, you think about that. So, very fun event. It was and, and kudos go to Brianna Schumacher for really hunching much of that and putting that together and getting him on the map and following through with that, because you know, look at the trajectory that we've changed for that young man's life. It's a pretty neat thing. So, pretty cool. Habitat for Humanity has a luncheon tomorrow that I will attend. Uh, the, one of the featured pieces is the Dr. Claudia Thomas House that Habitat is doing. You've all heard about that. Uh, Andy Gurnan was instrumental along with Helen McGovern and kind of really promoting that. It is going to be an individual home, one of the duplexes, I think, that's going to be in, built in honor of, uh, Dr. Claudia Thomas. So many of us have contributed to that particular build. There was about their goal was 100 grand. I think the, the balance was around 10, 11 grand and Lakewood Rotary picked it up and funded the rest of it. So that was a really neat thing to do to really bring a sense of locality and community to that project, so. I look forward to hearing more about that tomorrow. Other than that, good week. We've got a lot going on and next week, as you know, we have our special meeting where we're going to review and, uh, likely vote, it's up to council, but likely vote that evening for the selection of a new council member. I think Ms. Schumacher will send out the process by which we elected or selected the last council member. It was a vote process if you process by which we elected or selected the last council member. It was a vote process, if you recall. I think of the eight candidates that will be before us, we have a round of three votes, I think, or four, uh, where we all vote for the top four candidates of our personal preference based upon the qualifications we discussed. We want to see any council member, and then that bubbles up, and then we vote for the top three, and then the vote the top two, and hopefully down to one, so the clerk will be assisting us in the vote, uh, along with the city attorney to make sure we keep our process straight, and, um, more to follow on that. So I think that is all we have for tonight.